Welcome, everybody, to the Committee of the Whole, April 21st, 2020. To begin with, tonight, we have scheduled Committee of the Whole Redevelopment Agency and Council meeting. Because of the current health pandemic, and in order to comply with the Governor's Directive to stay safe, stay home, and the Public Health Order issued by the County Health Department and County Mayor, we have determined that an in-person meeting, including attendance by the public and the council, is not practical or prudent. Therefore, this meeting will be held remotely through electronic means. Each person is participating from a separate location. We are totally dependent on the Internet and technology to broadcast this meeting and to ensure the public has the opportunity to view the proceedings. However, there could be a malfunction that is totally out of our control. We don't expect any issues, but want you to be aware of that possibility. If you would like to submit citizen comments or public hearing comments, please email to city.council@murray.utah.gov. They should be less than three minutes, including your name, your contact information, and they will be read into the record. All council members are present, so proceed with the meeting. Approval of the minutes, Council Workshop, February 20th, 2020. Do you have any additions, or deletions, or a motion?
I'll move approval if there are no questions or additions to the City Council Workshop minutes for February 20th, 2020.
I'll second.
Jennifer?
Ms. Dominguez?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. House?
Sorry, aye, aye.
Ms. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye. Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. Boys and Girls Club Report, Leanne Salvar.
Hello. Thank you for letting me join the meeting, everybody. This is blessed Janet's heart for figuring out all the logistics of a meeting like this. I'd like to, and I hope you'll forgive me because I've got multiple screens going, so I'm gonna dart from screen to screen here for a few minutes, but normally, at this time of year, this would be a great celebration of what the Boys and Girls Clubs is up to. And today is no different, but I will try to make it short and then leave questions open to you all. Of course, I always, as always, want to thank Murray City, Mayor Camp, and all of the council for everything you've done for the Boys and Girls Club and for being the best council to wrap around the Boys and Girls Club of all the cities we work on or work in. And normally, in this report, I would give you a report of how Murray City funds were utilized in the past year to sustain the biggest and busiest Boys and Girls Club, not only in our Greater Salt Lake Organization, but the entire state of Utah, talking about the number of youth enrolled and daily attendance and waiting lists. And I did provide a written report for that, that I hope you've all had an opportunity to review. I would have also hoped, in this meeting, to introduce our Youth of the Year, Carissa Vera, who's just a marvelous young woman, and let her speak a little bit about her experience at the Boys and Girls Club and how it's shaped her life. But if you're willing to let me do it, Carissa would love to speak to you on video and send that to you after this meeting, because she's not getting a chance to be our ambassador like a normal Youth of the Year might, but she's just a wonderful young woman. And I would love to have her get the opportunity to do that. And again, in normal times, which we are not in, I was planning and hopeful to introduce some new plans that we've been concocting here about as we finish up the landscaping and the displays at our new expansion. Bob Dunn and I have been working on a plan to introduce a historical display and recognition of the history of the Murray Boys and Girls Club and its roots in Murray City government. And we have some really cool things we would like to do. We were hoping to be able to have those finalized this spring and maybe do an unveiling this summer, but we will see how that goes forward. But we still think it's an important project that we'd like to work on. And I'd love to be able to work with city leaders to work on the details on that and then figure out a good, safe time to unveil that to Murray City and the community. So because we're in different times, I did include a cover letter with my report to kind of describe to you how things have changed from what would be a normal presentation to the council and city, but things are not normal. They aren't normal for you, and they're not normal for us either. I can't imagine, it's been challenging enough to operate a small business in this environment. I can't imagine what it takes, the stresses on city officials. So I appreciate you all hearing our little part of that story and what we're doing in Murray. First of all, what I'd like to do real quickly is paint a picture of what our kids and families are experiencing right now and how we're responding and adapting to those needs. You know, if you looked closely at our report, you'll see that our, the number of families we serve in Murray that are low income, low to moderate income, has jumped significantly. And that's not because the families we serve has changed. It's because the HUD guidelines have finally said that another category of families should be included in the group called Low to Moderate Income, which are struggling families, working families. And so the number of families that qualify for that label, as it were, has jumped significantly from the prior year to this year. And it is a categorization thing. It doesn't mean they weren't struggling before. It just means they're being recognized that they're not moderate wealth folks. They are struggling families. And so what's happening right now with our families, not, they already were struggling. But we are seeing increasing numbers of kids who are facing housing insecurity, a lot of food insecurity. Our kids are struggling with academic loss. Kids are not engaging in virtual schooling equally across the board, for sure. Our kids are missing out on healthy outlets for just recreation and play, which are important parts of being a kid. And I think, worst of all, and the thing that's starting to worry our staff the most is the isolation that our kids are feeling. They're isolated from their peers, and they're isolated from positive adults in their community. And for a lot of our kids, we have great families, but we also have families that that home is a tumultuous environment for kids. Home is not peaceful. Sometimes home isn't safe. And for people, parents, who struggle in what might be normal times to maintain a sense of safety and physical safety and emotional safety for their kids in their household in normal times, we're extremely worried about the mental health of some of our kids right now and those who cannot reach us and that we can't communicate with for a variety of reasons. So that's something that we're really working on. I outlined briefly in my cover letter what the Murray Club has done to respond to the needs as they've emerged. I mean, this has been the craziest four weeks or so in all of our lives, but I am just the Murray Club is actually the standard bearer. The team at this club has done more. They've done it more quickly. They've done it better, and they've done it with more resilience and incredible spirit than any of our other clubs. And they are really the standard bearer and leading the way for all of our other clubs how to respond. Part of the reason for that is that we've got an outstanding team at Murray. But the other reason for that is that Murray City School District was the very first to call a closure. And we had to respond to that in about two hours. How we were gonna follow suit on that, what we were gonna do the next day, how we were gonna care for the kids that were already in our club that day. You know, we have a preschool program, so it's open and operating. We do pickups on kindergarten kids, and then we have our after-school program. And so even though we have suspended our after-school services following the Governor's Directive, our preschool services continued, and we had to get those kids from school to somewhere that day when parents were struggling, and the Murray team just responded to that with flying colors. Shortly thereafter, of course, we had an earthquake, and the Murray Club opened at 6:30 in the morning. So the building shook with kids in it and with staff in it, and they were outstanding. And I did mention in my letter, Murray City personnel were just incredible and the first to respond. It was the first building that we got inspected. It was the first building we were able to clear for occupancy and get our families back in business after that earthquake. So what we have been doing, the very first thing we did was reestablish as much service as we could to the populations we could, given the Governor's Directive. And then shortly thereafter, all the other school districts closed, and emergency care centers were announced through the Office of Childcare, and they requested providers to be able to bring staff onboard to serve, actually, it was first responders and medical personnel right out of the gate. And we had an inkling that our proximity to the hospital would make the Murray Club in high demand, and it is indeed in the highest demand. So we have been working with the Office of Childcare and opened immediately as an emergency care center. We don't, the Office of Childcare sends parents our way who live in the area or work in the area and who need care, and they can choose our center or from a group of other providers that might be around here. And so instead of maybe seeing 100 kids a day in that preschool program, we might see eight or 12. But what I'm most proud of is that staff who were scared and frightened for themselves and their family responded and agreed to come to work and serve a group of kids who are actually at higher risk because of who their parents are. They're engaging in the public, and these kids are at higher risk. And they were willing and ready to put their own health at risk to come and provide that service. So it is the club right now that we have that has the most it has the highest capacity, but it also has the highest number of enrollees in emergency childcares. The second thing that we were worried about was food. The club provides a healthy snack every day, and the club provides dinner every day. And when, we know that all the schools were providing, continue to provide free lunch and free breakfast, but we also provide backpacks for the weekend with dinner meals. And we were able to continue that service, and then we partnered with Murray School District to step up during spring break when they could not provide services. And it was gratifying for me, in my little window, I can see the front of the Murray Club right here, where I am across the street, to see the lineup of cars coming through and picking up meals for families to serve. And we serve 1,000 or more meals a day to try to pick up the slack. And we were able to do that with donated food, donated funds. And because our staff are not able to intermix with the general public if they're serving in emergency care centers, our Board of Directors actually came out and started serving those meals because they, our staff could not do that. So, and then the final thing is we, thank goodness that our kids, or I call them kids, our club staff are a lot younger than we are because they knew immediately how to get engaged on online programming. The Murray Club was the very first to jump onboard with daily club meetings on FaceTime, Instagram. I can't remember what the other ones are called, TikTok, things like that. And host virtual meetings with their kids so they could see each other and their peers. We've been able to continue to deliver substance abuse prevention programs virtually, academic support programs, our mentoring programs. And they have just been outstanding. There are projects every day and healthy, you know, sports things and ways to stay fit every day, and the Murray Club is the very first. So if you are not adept at those other platforms, at least check out their Facebook page because the Murray Club is putting out a ton of virtual programming. And the next thing we noticed is that there are kids who don't have the ability to access us online. A, they may or may not have the actual physical technology. And even if they do have a computer in their home, some of their parents are working from home, and we're all sharing a computer. They're trying to get their schoolwork done. There's two or three, four kids in the household, and mom and dad need the computer too. So we're getting ready. We just got a donation of 100 laptops, and we're gonna deploy those out to kids who cannot get on the computer at home. And then we've been very, very aggressive in promoting Comcast's Internet Essentials to our families. There's free Internet Wi-Fi access right now available to try to make sure that our kids have the opportunity to engage with us. It's the ones that are the most isolated that we're the most worried about, for sure. So we're, I cannot tell you how proud I am of the Murray Club. I have seen what they are doing. I've sent it out to colleagues across the country at Boys and Girls Clubs, and they have led the charge in how to step up to the plate in this response. We, as an organization, have not had to lay anybody off or furlough anybody at this point. Our Board of Directors made a commitment to use some of our reserves to continue payroll through the end of April. We, just yesterday, thank goodness, were granted a payroll protection loan that will get us through June. And so that it gives us a little bit of breathing room, but we are very concerned about summertime. You guys all probably know that 400 kids need to come to the Murray Club during the summertime, and we don't know what that looks like yet, but we are planning for that. And our concern about doing layoffs or furloughing is that when the Governor says it's time to open the doors, even on a limited basis, if our staff have left us, we can't respond quickly. So we're doing our best. Like I said, virtual programming and staff are doing a ton of training. Bless their hearts, webinars every day so that we can keep them onboard so that when the time comes, we're poised to get back to as close to normal business as we can when that happens. We have opened summer camp enrollment. We are limiting the spots right now to 50 children in the event that we have reduced numbers of children that were able to serve in a club because of group restrictions. But we are taking names in order so that we can release families off this list as soon or as quickly as possible. So we have opened that, and we're super hopeful that come the first couple of weeks in June or even into July, that we'll be able to get closer to business as normal and that we'll be back in business in the fall. So that's kind of how our planning process is working. I know that the council can't imagine what kind of excruciating decisions you all have to make. You have loss of revenue also. We're all on those kinds of decisions every day. I know you all support and love your Boys and Girls Club, and I hope that you consider what we're doing as essential to the people who are looking at Murray, making about it, decisions and considerations, and can find a way to continue our funding so that we can keep our funding and fully ready to launch programs as normal as soon as we can. The end.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate what you do. Are there any questions? If not, we'll move on to
Dale?
Yeah.
I just have a comment. I just want to thank Leanne for her leadership and let you know we really appreciate what you do. And thank you for being so thorough. You answered all my questions, so I don't have any. But anyway, you take care.
You too. Stay safe.
You too.
Anyone else?
Can I jump in? I just want to say, yeah, I had a list of questions, but you answered all of them through your presentation, so thank you. And just please pass on to the staff. I know the emergency childcare procedures are much stricter. I mean, for good reason, but they are difficult. So thank to them for all the extra effort and steps and sanitation that they're going through right now. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, big thanks from me too, Brett.
I had, of course, I appreciate everything that the Boys and Girls Club does, and I know this is a difficult time, and I know many Boys and Girls Clubs are facing the same thing across the nation. The one question I did have for you is with some of these kids that you are unable to contact with, have you been in communication with the school district or the mentors or the schools to see if they've been in communication with them to know that they are safe or if there's been any cross-communication that way?
At the schools, school level, at this point, no. One of the very first things we did was immediately try to find a text platform like the schools have to communicate with all parents so that we could get information out. And this is not something we've had before, but to not give parents the option not to opt in just so that we had cell phone numbers for parents. Oftentimes, they don't give us their contact information. So we've been pretty successful, and at this point, parents are frustrated and their kids are driving them nuts, and they're driving their kids nuts. And they're really been very good about saying, oh, yes, but we have a policy not to have text communication directly with kids between staff, so we need to get through a parent's phone and then have that conversation with kids and say, how can we help you? So our protocol is to say, why haven't you been participating? How can we help you do that? And then, but I love that suggestion. As schools settle down and they settle into their new normal, I think they may be more able to be responsive. They've been pretty scattered.
Yeah. Well, I know personally, I'm working with a mentor that is at Murray High, and she has had a very high success rate because she has physically known them and she's had to go into their communities. So that could be a great resource for you if it's some of the kids that she may be in connection with or any of the other staff within the district itself. I mean, just that one key communication that can probably help with some of those students. Because, yeah, I worry too. I worry that these kids are, you know, are missing essential needs like food or even schoolwork, you know, how could we get, how can the Boys and Girls Club assist them, of course? And how can you guys be successful even through this pandemic?
Yes, yes. No, that's an outstanding suggestion. And I think school counselors right now have finally kind of settled in and know the kids are having, they know who's not participating in school. And the question is why and what can we do about it?
Okay.
Murray District, I will say, thank goodness, they deployed all their Chromebooks before everybody else. So they were way ahead of the game on that. And so that gives those kids an opportunity. But it also, you know, there needs to be some structure in the home and a parent guiding, and sometimes that's just not there.
Great. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate you and what you guys all do.
All right, I'll chime out of your meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, 2020 Legislature Report, GL, Corey and Dave.
Thank you. As you know, our lobbyists are here with us tonight, Corey Holdaway and David Stewart. We appreciate the work they do at the legislature. They have great insight, great contacts, understand the process inside and out. They've been a great help in our each year. For tonight, I thought what I'd do is just give, talk about a couple of bills. There's many you could choose from. I've chosen two land use bills just to kind of give an overview of the direction the legislature went on each of these bills. And then I'm going to turn some time over to Corey and over to David to kind of give their impressions of what happened to the legislature, see if they have anything they want to talk about specifically in terms of bills. And then from there, if there's still time, we can take some questions. The first bill I wanted to talk about briefly was House Bill 273, which is the Property Rights Ombudsman Amendments. And this is, council will know that there's an office in the Department of Commerce, which is known as the Property Rights Ombudsman. And this is a place where when a city or county, the developer are at odds, they can go to have it mediated, they can get an advisory opinion, and they can go on from there. In years past, up until this legislative session, if you went to the ombudsman and you got an advisory opinion and you went to court after that, and the court ruled against you, which was against or was in favor of the advisory opinion from the ombudsman, the winning side could get attorney's fees. In addition to that, the legislature has now said, not only can you get attorney's fees, but you can pick up $250 a day in penalty if it is found that the losing party violated the law knowingly and intentionally. It's written in a way that seems to be pretty even-handed, but the way this in practice will typically work is your private parties will, there's a good chance they will recover. Cities may or may not recover in terms of that penalty. It's just the way it has been through the years with the courts. On the other side of things, there was a bill that's House Bill 388, which is the Land Use Development Management Revisions. And this is one which is an annual task force that gets together to propose bills. And this is made up of the Utah League of Cities and Towns, land developers and others. And in this bill, among other things, one of the things I thought was very significant was they have provided a definition for an adversely affected party. Now, what does that mean? If you have a developer in the city, again, there's a decision that's made. If there's a third party that disagrees with that, up until now, it was very difficult to know whether that third party could participate in some kind of an appeal or a lawsuit. And so consequently, that meant just about anybody could. What this bill does, it defines and kind of narrowly defines an adversely affected party as one who owns property right adjoining the property in question or someone who can demonstrate that they have a, they somehow will suffer damage different than anybody else in the community. So what that means in practice is it should limit the number of third-party challenges or appeals in cases. We've had a couple of these over the years. You're all aware of those. What this will, what this should do is limit those third-party appeals to, and meaning you'll have developers and cities at odds, but you shouldn't get too many third parties involved in these cases. We'll see if this holds up in court. Someday, I'm sure it'll be challenged, and we'll see what the courts say. But right now, that was a very good change in the law, I think, and very favorable to cities. At this point, I'd like to have, Corey, if you'll give us some thoughts on what you thought about the legislature, and if you have a bill or two you want to talk about, that's fine. And then after Corey, David, if you'll say a few things too.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, GL. I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you all. These are a little bit stranger times than I think we're all used to, but I think we're all getting used to these Zoom meetings, for better or worse. I do like the to these Zoom meetings and uh, for better or worse. Uh, I do like, uh, the, the personal uh, interaction a little more than the, uh, the screen interaction, but uh, I mean, these are, these are strange times. Um, a couple of things I want to just kick off with is, uh, this session was much, uh, was, was, was a lot different than some of the other sessions. And I, it seems like I say that every, uh, every year. We, we have something like that go on every year. Um, it started out with, uh, the repeal of the, uh, the tax bill that was passed in December. Um, in fact, that bill was, uh, was brought up and passed in a matter of about four days, uh, going through the entire process, uh, from, uh, being introduced to being signed by the governor. Um, and, uh, and that then set the stage on a budgetary issue, on budgetary issues um, i- in a lot different way, uh, than in previous, uh, sessions. Um, the legislature, um, was awash in, in, uh, education fund money or income tax. Um, but they had, or, or they claimed to have very little of, uh, of the general fund money uh, that, uh, is so important to cities. Uh, and so, um, there was quite a lot of j- uh, jockeying and, uh, and whatnot throughout the entire session as far as the budget goes, um, with regard to, uh, to just funding basic services and, and whatnot. Um, at the end of the day, it, I, there are a couple of bills that I want to bring up, um, given the, the coronavirus as well. Um, there's a bill, and I think, uh, Dave brought this up to you at, prior to the session beginning. It was, uh, House Bill 185. It was, uh, a bill introduced, or not 185, I'm sorry. It was the, uh, the bill dealing with, uh, um, the first one on the, the list that I sent you, and I don't have the list in front of me unfortunately, um, dealing with, uh, internet sales for automobiles. We're going to see, I think, an uptick in that, um, to the detriment of, of Murray City, I think. And that, that ought to be something that, uh, that you're paying attention to. Um, the other issue I wanted to bring up was a Senate joint or a Senate Concurrent Resolution 6, which is a resolution that was passed at the end of the session that has to do with, uh, a discussion in terms of, uh, sales tax distribution. Um, it was prompted by, uh, um, the Senate um, and some of the frustrations they've had with regard to the, the sales tax distribution formulas, uh, and wanting to make some changes there. The league was instrumental in, in, uh, getting that, uh, uh, getting a voice on that, uh, on, on the, uh, the commission, or the, the league will be taking it up as, in terms of the commission, uh, as a, uh, um, uh, a topic of, of discussion throughout the interim. Um, and, uh, I, I think that will be something that we're, we're going to need to pay attention to. Um, the other thing I was just going to bring up is, uh, the special session. Um, there was a joint resolution during the special session this past week, or, or during, it, the special session is still going, but it was passed last Friday, uh, House Joint Resolution 301, uh, and it was a resolution just encouraging local cities to, uh, to be setting, be, being careful in how they're setting their budgets, uh, as you're all are going through your budget, uh, um, process right now, that the, uh, the funds that we were anticipating will not be the same as what, uh, what will be coming in. And in fact, the recommendation was, is to, uh, to not, uh, um, not raise any type of, or not increase any of the budgets to go on, uh, the 2020 or, uh, the, the 1920, uh, budgetary, uh, base. So, um, there are a few others that I could bring up, but, uh, with that, I think Dave probably has some things he'd, he'd want to throw in there as well. So I'll, I'll throw it over to Dave.
Oh yeah, sure. Thanks Cory. Um, so yeah, echo what Cory said, the, the, one of the bills I would add would be House Bill 261, that was eminent domain. That was one that Cory and I worked closely with the lead to defeat. Um, it was, uh, limiting the ability to use eminent domain by cities. Uh, no surprise run by Representative Lyman from down southern Utah. He's, uh, very conservative and very property rights oriented. Um, was able to defeat that. We'll continue to see, I think, things chipping away at eminent domain. Was working most all session and quite a few meetings in pursuing some transportation funding that would have included some of the quarter of the quarter monies to get some local projects done and had Murray slotted in for a couple of million dollars. In the end, um, there was a, the Senate was on board. There was an impasse with the House on a overall bond at the state, which is what we were going to piggyback on to do it. And so that was put on hold and obviously before Corona hit, the idea and the promise was next year is when they were going to do it, because that man teed up some larger state projects they wanted to address. Obviously, that's now a little bit in limbo. Um, although the last time we actually did a billion dollar bond at the state level was back during the Great Recession, um, in 08, um, to kind of help spur the economy and and at the same time as it is now, interest rates were so low and, and there was a, a lot of availability for contractors and stuff. So while intuitively it seems like it may not be a good time, there may actually, depending on how this economy goes, maybe an appetite. One of the things the special session that they are doing is authorizing the treasured issue, I don't know the final number, but around a half a billion in bonds to, uh, hoard some cash and end up paying for some buildings and prisons and other things that they were going to use cash. So now use bond dollars, uh, to do that, to keep cash available. And, and at the state level, certainly we're as a, you know, there'll be obviously drastic impacts to certain local businesses and communities. As an overall state, we are positioned probably one of the best in the country. We, we have indifferent rainy day funds and other things at the state level, probably over a billion dollars of cash. Um, like I said before, there's still additional bonding capacity. We're le- we're less than 50% of the current bonding capacity for the state. So there's a few billion dollars worth of bonding capacity there. Um, on top of that, we obviously benefited from the minimum kind of distribution from the federal stimulus that sent, you know, a little over a billion dollars to the state, some of that going to some counties. So when you total all up, you know, barring a, uh, you know, if this is a bit of a blip and we're able to kind of ramp things back up and there'll be a hit, but I think like we did in 08 as a state anyway, we'll be able to weather that. And we'll have, as, as Murray is certainly one that's more, um, dependent on sales tax even than probably other ci- cities because we have such a large base, will want to be cognizant and certainly communicate with Cory and I. One of the things that we worked on during, leading up to the special session, we're able to, to defeat, as we talked to members of leadership, was an idea and a concept of in trying to help those struggling businesses to create a sales tax holiday, if you will, where the idea being that for about a month or two, they were going to allow businesses that had a certain decline, percentage decline in revenues to not have to remit sales taxes. The idea being, you know, certainly at the state is where they started the idea, but as we explained through the trickle down effect and that to suddenly take a couple of months of sales tax and just say, you know, we're just going to absorb that, that's not something that, uh, most cities are in a position to do. And so that was ultimately scrapped for different other incentives and things and stimulus money from a state level. Um, as Cory stated, the special session is still ongoing till the end of this week. They're going to take up a few more bills on Thursday and Friday. One that's still up in the air is House Bill 3009 dealing with, that you've obviously heard about, I'm sure, of, of local governments and the ability to, uh, who can do what, who has the authority to issue what. And so that's still being hammered out and, and I wouldn't be shocked if that ends up getting hunted to a later special session as they try to, to resolve. I mean, that, the ironic thing is you, you have cities and other jurisdictions certainly concerned, and then you have the ultra conservative factions of the Republican Party, uh, very concerned. So, you know, I think, uh, they mostly didn't really understand what it was being proposed, otherwise they would probably be in favor of that. And that's kind of what Libertas has been trying to convince everybody. So, you know, we certainly talk more. I mean, as Cory brought up, we had the repeal of tax reform at the beginning of session. We ended with COVID-19. The idea being that tax reform was going to be taken up with the new governor and the, this next legislature, obviously with everything else going on, that's certainly off of everybody's, the front burner right now, but hanging out there at some point, there will be a discussion and ultimately, as Cory mentioned earlier, some of the sales tax distribution could become part of that discussion. So we'll want to stay tuned. There will be um, likely another special session, could be as early as next month, but certainly by June or July to deal with budgets at the state level. And right now, they're just shifting some money around, but they're having, I know departments and others prepare anywhere from 10 to 20% cuts and, and how that would look. And then what they may do, what they kind of did in 08 is have the departments make those cuts and then backfill um, as they're able to free up money in different places, but at least make the hard decisions as to if, if we have to make this and if this stretches out over a year or two, then we've done the, the legwork to be prepared. But, you know, everybody at this point is optimistic that we'll be able to backfill with, uh, with the monies that we have and not ultimately have to make those draconian cuts. But that kind of in a nutshell is, is where it's at and certainly open to any questions or things you guys want to talk about.
Just if I could interject here as well, um, the, uh, the next stimulus, uh, bill that, uh, is going to be passed, um, probably today or tomorrow. Um, in fact, I was on a, a call with, uh, um, Congressman McAdams, uh, yesterday. He indicated that there, there was initially, there was some hope that, uh, that there would be some, uh, some money available to cities and local cities and counties, uh, with that. Uh, it, uh, according to, uh, at least yesterday, um, it doesn't look like there's going to be any money available for the, the next, uh, tranche of, of funding to go out. Um, but there is some already some talk about a fourth stimulus, uh, package as well. And it's, it's interesting is, uh, as these, these federal bills come out, the first one was, was a slam dunk. They got it done quickly. The next one is, uh, fairly quick. This one has taken a, a little bit longer, or actually quite a bit longer. I suspect if there's a fourth tranche, it'll be even be that much longer. Uh, and, and the thought was, is that that, uh, that next federal stimulus package would, uh, would be out there for cities and, uh, and local jurisdictions to be able to take, uh, uh, some support from. Um, so I, you know, you, you hope, but I, it isn't something I would ever budget on. Okay, thank you Cory. Are there any questions?
Yeah Cory, did you say bet on or budget on?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh.
That was great. Thank you for, thank you for me.
All right, uh, thanks. Uh, we really appreciate that and all the hard work you do up there. I know it's, it can be trying at times. All right, we'll move on to the fashion place, West Small Area Plan, Mark Morrison and Lisa Eckenberger.
All right, thank you. Uh, can you hear me all right? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, I'm trying to share my screen. Hold on just a second. All right, are you able to see my presentation there?
Yep. Looks good.
It's always good when it works. Uh, good. Um, it's good to be, uh, be back with you again. My name is Mark Morris with VODEN. I'm here with Annalise Eckenberger, and we wanted to give you uh, just a little bit of an update on the planning process that we have been going through on the Fashion Place West uh, Small Area Plan. If you'll remember, we came in a couple of months ago at the beginning of our process and, um, we came in, gave you a little, a little bit of data on, um, the project goals. Um, we, uh, have some existing conditions to give you a little bit of data on and give you a little bit of information on the first open house, uh, that we had in February and talk through a little bit about the next, um, kind of the next pieces of the Small Area Plan as we, as we move ahead. If at any time during our presentation, if you have any questions at all, please, um, feel free to interrupt and we'll, um, answer as, as best we can. The, the first section of the Small Area Plan is an existing conditions report that we have developed, uh, along with Farron Peers Transportation Consultants to look at the major uh, uh, infrastructure issues facing the Fashion Place West area. Uh, this existing conditions document is quite lengthy and we're more than happy to share that with you for those of you who would like to read through the complete, um, existing conditions document. Um, for, uh, sake of time, we've got just a few data points that we wanted to, uh, present, uh, present to you today to kind of talk through how, um, how this data kind of impacts the, the planning of this particular area in the city. Um, this, um, this bit of information is interesting. It's always, uh, it's always interesting to find, um, find demographic data that is unique in a, in a specific part, uh, part of a city. So the data there on the left, you'll see the green column is the study area. So the area that we're just looking at here in the immediate vicinity of the Fashion Place West tracks station. So you can see the median home value in this area is significantly lower than the rest of Murray City. Um, and as, as you can see, Murray City tracks, uh, pretty well in line with the median home value of, uh, Salt Lake County. Um, these are last year's numbers, and so that number has gotten even, even higher. Uh, when looking at median, uh, median home values, the, uh, median household income as well in the study area is, uh, considerably lower than, uh, than the rest of the city. So um, those, um, those two data points and kind of comparing them to the rest of the county, um, kind of see that this area really, um, is in need of some significant, uh, investment um, from a, a lot of different, uh, lot of different angles. Um, on our team are, as I mentioned, are Farron Peers Transportation Consultants, and we've been working with them to look at connectivity and transportation issues, uh, within, uh, within the study area. Uh, as you know, this part of the city has some challenges when it comes to connectivity with the, uh, freeway corridors, uh, rail corridors, State Street as a corridor is also a significant barrier. And so kind of, um, spending the time to look at the networks and where those, those issues arise and see what the city uh, can do to work in conjunction with, uh, UDOT and other, uh, other entities to improve that, uh, improve that connectivity. So the image there on the left, you can see we've got a, a, a score. We've given, uh, the sidewalk network in this area a different color based on its, um, quality and, and experience there, kind of green for, uh, good quality sidewalk infrastructure, yellow for a little bit iffy, and then red for those areas where that infrastructure uh, is missing. Um, one of the two big drivers of this project is, is connectivity. How do we improve that connection between the track station and the Fashion Place mall site? Uh, so looking at how to improve that, in all of our conversations with, um, UDOT, UTA and the Fashion Place, um, management, everyone recognizes that the city can, you know, do, do things with city, uh, city controlled infrastructure. The mall itself, they recognize that they have connectivity issues for anyone not arriving at the mall in a vehicle. You can see those red, uh, the red lines along the roads accessing the mall, that even if you are a pedestrian who's walked from the tracks platform all the way to the mall, there's literally no, uh, infrastructure for pedestrians once you leave the curb uh, at, at the mall site. So that's, uh, that's something that everyone recognizes as a major issue if we're going to, uh, start improving those, um, those connectivity gaps. Uh, the heat map there on the right takes data from an app called Strava that cyclists will use to track their, uh, their movements. Yellow areas are areas of high, uh, high usage, high activity for cyclists and the red for, um, less, uh, less activity. Two main corridors for cyclists, uh, throughout this area is Winchester, of course, a major connector for everyone east and west, and, uh, Cottonwood Street, north and south, that connects, uh, connects to a lot of Murray's, um, transit oriented development areas, um, new construction, um, kind of along the west side of the city, uh, as well as to Midvale City, uh, to the south. Uh, then, uh, just a, a quick summary in looking at land use, you know, this is a pretty large area that we are looking at in this study. Uh, just under 50% of it is residential with the majority of that being single family, uh, single family neighborhoods, um, the north and south of 215. Um, there are a few developments of multifamily, uh, housing, uh, to the south end of the area. Uh, then the other half, uh, uh, half of this study area are non-residential uses, so industrial and, and commercial uses. Um, When we look at areas like this, the intent is to make sure that we uh we make sure that the solutions provided are contextual and reflect uh the needs of a of a particular area. So none of this uh kind of end product of a small area plan would say here's a broad brush policy for the entire area. We would have very specific policies for uh smaller subareas throughout uh throughout the the project area. Uh, and then finally, uh we wanted to put all of the connectivity issues on on one map. As I as I mentioned, we'll get you each a copy of that existing conditions plan, but this looks at all of the uh locations where there were um breakdown in those um in those connections, in those uh transportation networks, so that we can then uh prioritize those and come up with solutions on how uh how things could uh be funded and improved to uh deal with the connectivity issues uh on the in the small area. Uh, real quick summary about the uh open house. Uh, the 12th of February, we had an open house at the Senior Center uh and had a good turnout, a mix of residents of the of the subarea itself as well as other uh other Murray City residents or people who commute through and were uh mostly curious about what the uh what the project entailed. Um, I'd say for the most part, the reactions were quite positive, and uh many were just curious, you know, what sort of development is being proposed. So a project like this, you know, we don't have a specific development uh uh teed up. It's more looking at what kind of constraints would there be to this sort of development the city wants to see in this area. So this area, um, everyone sees a lot of uh a lot of opportunity, uh but not not a lot of development happening today. So uh at the end of this, having some specific policies that the city could uh implement in order to get the types of development that uh to align with the the goal of the uh the city's goals. Um, we asked the participants in the uh open house a few questions and just to get uh get their response and kind of get them thinking about the future of their of their neighborhood. So we asked which of uh which of the city's five key initiatives from your general plan seemed most uh related to this neighborhood. Um, the uh majority responded that improving the livability and vibrancy of the neighborhood was uh was important as well as introducing multimodality, improving those uh those networks for uh pedestrians and cyclists. Um, most respondents said the types of destinations they like to see in the the neighborhood itself was more public space and parks, additional dining options, grocery market, those sort of um daily daily types of destinations are things that people wanted to wanted to see. Uh, another question that we asked was uh to get people thinking about the next stage of of life, housing. You know, at different parts of our life, we have different needs when it comes to housing. And so asking people, you know, imagining yourself in 10, 20 years, what type of housing do you wish would be in the neighborhood that you could stay in your neighborhood, keep your social network, but also have uh housing that's a little more um uh appropriate for where you are uh in your life. So as you can see, the number one response was a single family home, followed by uh townhome and uh ADU's accessory dwelling units. Um, a brief um brief summary about the small area plan and the housing section. The majority of this particular plan, when we come back to you with a draft, will be uh a a section on housing and a section on connectivity. Um, and Annalise is going to walk us through a few slides, talking a little bit about what we've um what we've been working on as far as housing goes uh in this particular area.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, everybody. So as Mark said, um, after our existing conditions and our open house, we started on the um small area plan and the future planning for the area. So with this, I wanted to just go over a short overview about our housing section and uh wanted to talk with you about the outline here first. The um the first kind of part of our housing section talks about housing supply and demand and how population growth, affordability, and home values, um how these factors affect the uh supply and demand of housing in the study area. And then we talk about how Murray's current policies, so general plan and zoning ordinance addresses housing right now uh to get a better understanding of how um these uh documents can be amended potentially uh in the future to help accommodate future housing. So the last section in our housing section um is are the implementation and recommendations for the city. And we were very careful with this. Um, we decided to section out this implementation for housing in the two four separate areas um in the four separate areas of the study area. As we all know, these areas are very unique. And so we um we created four subareas, the established residential, which is the single family homes um on the north and south side of I-215. The urban mixed-use area, which is that commercial district on State Street where the mall is. We also have the transit oriented kind of mixed-use area, and that's the area immediately adjacent to the track station. And then what we're thinking over the next 20 years might transition into more of a jobs and housing mixed use, and that's what currently is the manufacturing area just do uh directly east of I I-15. Next slide. So just to give a little bit of context as far as the housing market and current housing market, um we can start with some statistics. The graph there on the left-hand side of your screen um basically tells us that renters in Salt Lake County make up a majority of the cost burden households. And so and that number is continuing to rise. And so um that is telling us that rental options in varying different degrees, whether that's single family homes or apartments, and everywhere in between is a necessary thing that we need to look at. The um graph or the graphic on your right um basically says that the Salt Lake County Chamber took a poll and 94% of the respondents believe that affordable housing is a major problem for Utah's continued economic growth. And that just tells us that that's something that we definitely need to look at. And so the fact that this plan is focused um half on housing is very important and positive. So the last graphic I have here is talks about walkability, and we talk about walkability a lot in this small area plan due to the public transit in the area and the close proximity that this neighborhood it has to the mall, to the track station, and really at central location in general. So this graphic shows that in Salt Lake County, walkable home prices are 32% higher than car-dependent home prices. And so what that's really saying is that there is a premium and people will pay more to have a walkable uh home, and that's compared to other uh regional um cities. So as an initial part of our housing section, we looked at the current housing constraints in the study area as well as the constraints to future development um of housing in order to help with our implementation recommendations for you all. So the first constraint that we have um outlined is that the commercial district zone, as well as the manufacturing zones, do not allow residential. The second um point is that the single-family zone does not permit any higher densities um for housing. So not that we would expect single-family homes to be right next to apartments, but that maybe a um accessory dwelling units or maybe a duplex um as far as um what would be permitted would be possible in the future, and right now that's not. Um, third, the existing parking requirements um within the zones in the study area are at a point where on smaller lots, these larger dense, higher densities would not be possible because the parking requirements are so high. And that can, that's something where shared parking can come in to uh assist that in the future. Um, number four are the lack of financial incentives and that those would could potentially encourage development of additional housing in the future. So financial incentives are something to look at. It's not the only way to get future development or in good development, but it definitely helps. As we all know, I know you know, a lot of RDA project areas, for example, and those do help. So number five and six talk a lot about just connectivity. So we know that this study area has uh because of its um proximity um to I-15 and I-215, the access to the area is um broadly made by the two bridges. And so that um does create issues with walkability and then uh vehicle connections to the rest of the area. Um, number seven is the fact that there is a lack of publicly controlled property. So if there's publicly publicly controlled property, then public investment tends to spur private development. And right now we don't, besides some UTA parcels, there isn't um there aren't uh publicly held property in in the project area. And lastly, um, just the low vacancy rate impacts the current housing needs. So it just further shows that we do need more housing in this in the region, in the state, and definitely in the project uh study area, given the fact that the vacancy rate currently is so low. All right. So I know we all know what lifecycle housing is. I know we've all talked to you about it before. Um, but when making recommendations, we took into consideration the concept of lifecycle housing. So we all need different housing choices throughout our lives, or at least the option to have those. And having those different options within our own neighborhoods, and in this case in the study area is important. So that's everywhere, everything from maybe a single family home all the way to apartments and townhomes, row houses, uh rental and for sale options. And this is a small study area, but there is a lot of opportunity to um bring some of these options uh into the area. And lastly, um, our housing recommendations, like I stated in my initial slide, are segmented by appropriateness, if you would, um in each subarea. So as you'll see on the left, uh top left is our subarea one, and this is our established residential area. So types of housing that would be appropriate in the future that we would see would be um accessory dwelling units, potentially some duplex opportunities, as well as single family homes. And on in subarea two, which is the urban mixed-use area there along State Street with uh the mall there to the east, because of the high traffic and the speed limits and things in that area, we do see that because it's along State Street, higher residential um higher density residential development could be appropriate here. Uh, the fact that it's basically surrounded in many areas by other commercial um also increases the potential to have some higher, to focus your higher density residential there. And subarea three is the transit oriented mixed-use area. Now, we see this, as you can tell, that part of this area is adjacent to the I-215 and I-215. However, other area, other parts of this subarea are adjacent to single family homes. So depending on the area in the study area, we do see, or this subarea, we do see row homes being appropriate, medium-density mixed-use right there around the track station where it's surrounded by commercial, and then potentially townhomes as well. And lastly, subarea four, as I mentioned previously, is currently where are the manufacturing uh zone is. Now, do keep in mind that everything that I'm talking about is definitely, you know, this is an area plan. This is a long-range plan. So over the next 20 years, as these areas transition, what we could see for this subarea four would be um some mic medium-density mixed-use there along the freeways uh and some townhomes and potentially condominiums. And that that does it for the housing section. Get back to Mark.
Okay, great. Thanks, Annalise. And as um as we work through this process, uh the next time we come back, we'll have more fleshed out uh recommendations and discoveries for both of these sections. Uh, the connectivity section here, we've got um, you know, the broad categories that we'll be looking at uh along with Farron Peers is looking at um traffic analysis and mitigation, the impact of of um to have development in this area will impact uh traffic demand, best practices to mitigate those um uh those changes in demand, and uh recommendations for improved connections, uh both working with um U-UTA and UDOT and all of the uh, you know, all the entities that uh that control uh transportation networks uh in the city. Parking management is always a always a concern and always a question when it comes to these types of develop development, making sure that we're again using best practices and context uh sensitive solutions. Uh, and meeting with uh management at the mall, they have a parking problem, which is they don't have enough. Uh, they also see that an increase in development density at the mall site gives them the opportunity to um increase the amount of parking uh that they can provide there. And so even looking at how a change in development patterns at the mall, that will expand their ability to uh continue to be uh competitive as a retail destination. Um, as with the housing section, we'll have strategic recommendations and implementation steps so that there will be projects that perhaps the city spearheads, projects that the city will need to coordinate with UDOT or UTA, and how do we how do we phase these so that you have, you know, projects you can accomplish in the next couple of years, projects that might take several years, projects that are a little bit more on the 20-year uh sort of with wishlist types of uh implementation steps. Um, so uh this, I believe, is our last slide. So uh as I mentioned, we're working through um drafting of a plan um that will come back to uh come back to you in the future to uh to work through. Uh, we had planned to have another public meeting in the month of May, uh which uh will not be happening. And so um over the next six weeks or so, we're looking at um having some online and digital public outreach where we can get some additional input and feedback from uh from the neighborhood and from other residents in the city. Um, so that as we're um coming up with policy recommendations and um changes to uh implement in this area, we've got some some feedback and some input uh for the people who know the know the neighborhood best. Um, and that is the end of our presentation. Um, tell me what uh what questions we can answer for you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions? We're running short on time.
Sure.
Okay, I think you've explained it uh very well. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead. Okay. Next, we have announcements. Jan?
Um, I don't have anything to announce right now. Thank you.
Well, we just got caught back up on time. All right, thank you. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting.